Good morning and welcome to the City Planning Commission Remote Public Meeting. Ryan Singer, Senior Director of Land Use and Commission Operations, will now outline general information about the remote public hearing and how to participate.
Thank you. Verbal testimony may be provided online or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak, you must register through the NYC Engage Portal. If you wish access to the hearing, please register through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with a dial and participant hotline listed on the screen. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participation ID. The password is the numeral one. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. Please note that no matter how you're accessing the meeting, you must first register if you want to speak. Those accessing the meeting online will have the audio on their camera while giving testimony. When it is your turn to speak, you will be notified and promoted to a panelist. This will allow you to unmute your microphone and grant you the ability to turn on your camera. Please listen closely for your name to be called. There will be a short period where it will appear you're no longer in the meeting. Don't be alarmed. You should rejoin the meeting as a panelist. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from a list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, we've given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to unmute your telephone. For those listening to the hearing through the live stream who have not yet registered to speak but decide they wish to do so during the hearing, you must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. It's not possible to testify through the online live stream without first having registered to speak. The same applies to those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so. You must also register to speak through the dial and participant hotline that I described a moment ago. It's not possible to testify via telephone without having first registered. Speakers are limited to three minutes of testimony. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If consecutive translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team of three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will be generally allowed a total of 10 minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Make sure that if you're watching the proceedings via live stream, that the live stream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, it will be an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. The mailing and email addresses can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. Lastly, please note that this remote public hearing is being recorded.
Welcome to the City Planning Commission Remote Public Meeting. Mr. Secretary, please begin the meeting.
We will begin the meeting. Thank you Chair Larmont. Good morning Commissioners. Good morning all. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021. I will now call the roll. Chair Larmont.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles. I can see Vice Chairman Knuckles on the screen, so I'll mark him present.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bernie.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli.
Present.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marine.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, October 20th, 2021.
On the minutes, I make a motion to approve the minute. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
The next item is scheduling, calendar numbers one through three. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, November 17th, 2021, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage Portal.
On the resolution, I make a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page four. Reports, Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers four and five. CD4, calendar number four, C210408ZMM. Calendar number five, N210409ZRM. In the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning the Starrett-Lehigh Terminal Warehouse rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers four and five. Chair Larmont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
The vice chair was experiencing technical difficulties. We can record his votes when he's back on.
Will do. Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers four and five. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number six, CDs nine and 10. In the matter of an application concerning the establishment of the Castle Hill Business Improvement District, for a favorable report on calendar number six. Chair Larmont.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you Commissioner Marine. Thank you Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number six.
It looks like the vice chair has rejoined us, so.
Okay, for calendar number six, Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes, and I'd like to vote yes for the preceding votes as well.
Thank you Vice Chairman Knuckles. So noted on calendar numbers four, five, and six. Calendar numbers seven and eight, Borough of the Bronx. CD8, calendar number seven, N210501ZAX. Calendar number eight, N210510ZAX. In the matter of applications for the grant of authorizations concerning 5051 Isolene Avenue Update SNAD. For adoption on calendar numbers seven and eight, Chair Larmont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers seven and eight have been adopted. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers nine and 10, CD10. Calendar number nine, C210164ZMQ. Calendar number 10, N210165ZRQ. In the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 103-16 Van Wick Expressway rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers nine and 10. Chair Larmont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Recused.
Commissioner Rampaschad recused. So noted. Thank you Commissioner Rampaschad.
Thank you.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers nine and 10. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 11 and 12. CD2, calendar number 11. Calendar number 12, N210397ZAR. In the matter of applications for the grant of authorization and modification to previously approved authorization concerning 2720 Highland Boulevard, for adoption on calendar numbers 11 and 12. Chair Larmont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 11 and 12 have been adopted. Calendar numbers 13 and 14, Borough of Staten Island. CD3, calendar number 13, N220017RCR. Regarding SD Boobletz property. Calendar number 14, N210473RCR. Concerning 104 Canton Avenue. In the matter of applications for the grant of certifications for adoption on calendar numbers 13 and 14. Chair Larmont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 13 and 14 have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 15 and 16. CD2, calendar number 15, N210447ZAR. Calendar number 16, N210448ZAR. In the matter of applications for the grant of authorizations concerning 66 and 68 Delamere Road, for adoption on calendar numbers 15 and 16. Chair Larmont.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 15 and 16 have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 17 through 19 have been laid over Commissioners. Our next item is the last voting item for this morning Commissioners. Supplemental calendar, Borough of Manhattan, calendar number one. CD1, C210444PPM. In the matter of application for the disposition of city-owned property concerning South Street Seaport Properties. For a favorable report on calendar number one. Chair Larmont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on supplemental calendar number one. Thank you Commissioners. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 15. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 20 and 21. CD1, calendar number 20. Calendar number 21, N210167GRK. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 79 Key Street rezoning.
Let me just first say that we limit individuals testifying to three minutes after we will be muted. And please just let me also note that while we welcome the opportunity to hear from you, we require that courtesy and decorum be observed at all times during your testimony. The first person testifying here will be Richard Lobell for the applicant.
Good morning. Once again, Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, PC, for the applicant in the 79 Quay Street rezoning. You can see the rezoning area highlighted in the circled area. Next slide. Which currently is an MX8 M12R6A mixed-use district, as was zoned in the 2005 Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning. Next slide. So you can see from the tax map, the intended rezoning. The rezoning would change the zoning district from the existing M12R6A to an M14R7D on this 16,000 square foot lot, resulting in a nine-story building with approximately 86 dwelling units, of which roughly 22 to 26 would be affordable. Next slide. So this is a land use map, and you can see why we feel this rezoning is particularly appropriate. The zoning district here, the M14R7D, is bounded by R6 and R8 non-contextual districts to the west, and R6B districts and various manufacturing districts to the east. So what this potentially would do in placing a nine-story mixed-use building here would be to allow for a transition between some of these larger developments, as appear to the west, and the more modest R6B buildings to the east. The R6 and R8 to the west have produced or are in the process of producing buildings ranging from 14 to 33 stories in height. So this really offers a nice transition area. In addition, it is intended that the ground floor commercial use would allow for activity on this corridor, which leads to the river and as well as public walkways. Next slide. So the next slide demonstrates the actual zoning map. The M14R7D here would be mapped along Quay and West Streets, so there's nice access to the site. This is the only proposed development that would be within the rezoning area. There's our additional, one additional lot, which is included, which is already residential and inhabited by loft units, so it is not an intended development site. And then there's a small piece of an existing commercial building, which would not change. Next slide. So we include pictures of the one- and three-story buildings at the site. These are relatively lightly-used and underutilized buildings, the FAR at the site. Despite the existing mixed-use district, as was established in the Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning, remains at roughly a 1.4, 1.5 FAR. So this is an exciting opportunity to allow for the development, which is included on the next slide. And would result in the nine-story building with roughly, I'm sorry, the next slide that includes the rendering, which should be in a few slides, which would include the nine-story building with 86 units and included parking, both automobile and bike parking in the cellar. So this is an interesting project. It's one that despite the apparent ability to develop this property under current zoning, both the applicant and the community board felt that the addition of these units and affordable units would enliven the area. And at that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lobell. Are there any questions from the Commission, from Mr. Lobell? Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Mr. Lobell, did you note the, one of the concerns of the community board with regard to the aesthetics of the building and how it might be made to look more compatible with the surrounding areas?
We did. We had an excellent conversation, both at the land use committee and at the full board. And the applicant is amenable to working with the community board, not only on the opportunity to beautify the area and create a building, which we feel will be within the context of the area, but also to allow for more discussion on the retail uses that would be here. But specifically, Vice Chair, with regards to the aesthetics of the building, the applicant has indicated not merely a willingness, but a desire to work with, particularly the land use committee, on whom there are several, on which there are several land use professionals, to really kind of give a nice facade treatment to the building and create something that the area will be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Lobell, in the same vein, I feel obliged to ask you about one more of the community board's recommendations, because we were told it would be addressed at the hearing, so here we are. And that is their fourth recommendation, that the owner will utilize more green and sustainable elements than just providing greenery around the building. Can you amplify a little bit what the developer's plans are for sustainable features in this building?
I can. So we did have that conversation, and I know that's an ongoing conversation. I think that the architect has said that they were going to provide additional materials in order for the project team to look at that. So, I mean, the short of it is that I know that there were certain stormwater retention systems, which were being looked at, as well as solar and energy systems for the building. So as was the discussion with regards to the retail diversity on the site, as well as the aesthetics of the building. The owner here is making a commitment to work with the community board with regards to sustainability measures. Commissioner Levin, I would note that this is not merely a developer who has no experience in the area. The development team, particularly ownership, has other properties and has been working in the Greenpoint-Williamsburg area on other buildings. So it's something that we do want to get in with, and we do want to make a good name for ourselves here, so we will be working on sustainability measures as well.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. And I'll also observe that since this is simply a rezoning, there's not much we can require in this regard, but it's important to get it on the table and have an understanding that the developer is committed to addressing these issues. Thank you.
We appreciate that. And we also would note the community board was in favor of the application, and so they're really part of this process, so thank you.
Got it. Good. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions from the Commission? Okay, I don't see any. So I would say that, you know, we look like we're at the end of this hearing, unless there's anyone else present who would like to speak on this item.
That is...
If not, the hearing is closed. Okay.
All right. Next item Commissioners, Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 22 and 23. CD1, calendar number 22, C210272ZSK. Calendar number 23, N210273ZRK. A public hearing in the matter of applications for a special permit and zoning text amendment concerning One White Avenue.
This will be a 10-minute team presentation commenced by Richard Lobell.
Hi Chair, thank you again, Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, PC, for the applicant in the One White Avenue IBIA special permit and text amendment application. I will be joined today by Nick Libares, the project architect, as well as Kevin Williams from Equity Environmental. I will begin a presentation with the land use piece. Kevin Williams will discuss some of the environmental issues, including traffic and parking. And then Nick will summarize the architectural and building features that are particularly desirable in this area with regards to the building features and what has been discussed with the area. So the One White Avenue IBIA special permit, next page, is requesting two items. The first would be a modification of 7496, the IBIA special permit area to include these three lots. The entirety of the development site is on this triangular piece, which you will see shortly, and so these would be within the IBIA now. As well as for the second piece, which is a zoning special permit under 7496, to accomplish three things: increase the floor area to allow for the incentive uses. Second would be to permit an adjustment in the height and setback regulations. And third would be to modify accessory off-street parking requirements. I believe that I may be in error. I think that Nick maybe just... No, Kevin would be discussing the environmental piece before Nick goes into a discussion of the architecture. Next slide. So you will see the lot here again. This is the entirety of the development site, which is bounded by three streets, obviously excellent street access for purposes of allowing for this mixed-use industrial and retail and office building. Next slide. So the land use map here demonstrates what we already know, which is that this is in the area, which was originally approved as part of the IBIA, after which all of the sites in the IBIA were eventually excluded, and now we are required to come in and include them back within the IBIA. But this was part of the original IBIA when designed, specifically to allow these M12 properties to convert from existing 4.8 FAR, which would permit community facility uses, to allow for indeed a range of more useful developments, which here would include a .8 FAR for industrial uses, with the remaining FAR for divided between incentive uses and permitted uses. Next slide. So here you can see pictures of the area. Again, the site itself is occupied by one-story warehouse-type buildings. The building here would be intended to rise to eight stories with an industrial use on the ground floor. Next slide, and we can go through the pictures just to the proposed IBIA slide, which shows the layout of the new IBIA district, again, appearing to the north of several previously created IBIA's. With that, and I would allow the conversation to enter into the environmental portion of the discussion. We simply note that the IBIA here permits this building to provide a greater percentage of commercial and specifically use group six uses than would otherwise be permitted. And here, this creates a very desirable mix of space, allowing for office use as well as industrial and accessory use. So with that, I believe I would hand it over to Kevin.
Well, this is Kevin Williams from Equity Environmental. We prepared the environmental assessment for the project. I'm not sure if there are slides in the presentation, but in terms of the environmental review that was provided, a negative declaration by Environmental Assessment Review Division for the purposes of evaluating the potential impact of the IBIA. We looked at multiple impact categories, which I'll be happy to discuss with the board if they so desire. But there was a particular question about parking in the area. As a part of the environmental assessment process, we analyzed a quarter-mile initially in terms of a parking study corridor, looked at both off-street and on-street specifically, and identified that there is both existing capacity and recently online projects, as well as some availability on-street spaces as those spaces become available as residents depart during the daytime. We also made sure, because it's a long environmental review process, to prior to going into the ULP, to expand and update the parking utilization analysis in the area and the demand of the facility, and identified over 450 available parking spaces off-street within a 10-minute walk, as well as, you know, as the environmental assessment shows, a considerable amount of available parking within a five-to-seven-minute walk from the project site. And the concept there is you have a lot of residential sourced parking that's also used for mixed uses present in the area that have both come online and have existed in the long run. And this allows for those facilities to be productively used while residents depart and leave their homes during the day and allows those commercial entities to make beneficial use of the available parking spaces. So we actually called about 20 different parking facilities in the area, identified on a monthly basis that there was, you know, well over 400 spaces available. And then on a transitory basis, basically meaning between the hours of eight and six o'clock, when residents are not occupying those spaces, that there's considerable additional capacity. So we believe in Environmental Assessment Review Division. So we, we believe and Environmental Assessment Review Division concurred that the project would not result in a significant impact on parking resources in the area. So I can hand it off to Nick.
Hi, everyone. This is Jeremy from Archimera, and I've, and Nick is here as well, my partner. We, if we could progress to the next slide. So this was a very unique site in that it's a, you know, triangular site that has no, no rear side yard. So every, every elevation is very prominent. And the, the massing for the site was driven very much by the zoning requirements of this special permit district, which allows dormers and, and the, the space requirements of the use sort of dictated these dormers be moved to the, to the white end of the site, giving a massing that is eight stories at the white side with the large, the large terrace on the fourth floor. The, the, we've located the entrances off of white as we see that as the main, the main corridor here. So you've got an office entrance. It's also your, your manufacturing uses all primarily on white with, with additional entrances off both Banker and 15th Street. The office entrance also addresses the cultural center that is across the corner. If we could progress to the next slide. And so, yeah, so you've got at the northwest corner, a cultural center there. We've got a small open space created where there's the office entrance at the corner and another open space at the narrow triangular site, corner of the site. I'll let Nick jump in to talk about the uses and some of the parking.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Jeremy. So we have 2.0 FAR of, of the permitted uses, you know, which could be anything which is allowed in one zone. And then we have 2.0 of incentive uses, which, which are limited to, to mainly office and some mandatory diagnostic type of use. And then we have .8 FAR for the light, light manufacturing use. And this, this is a unique project in this area and also unique in what's, what you guys have seen before in that we have first floor light, light manufacturing here. So this was something that, that was, that was kind of novel when it was first, first proposed, but it's, but it's really something that the community board was, was very, very supportive of. And it's something the city planning has been encouraging us to do with these projects for the past few years. So this is the first site where we were able to actually do this. And it's something that we feel is going to have a much, a much more dramatic effect with the intent of what this permit does, which is to keep, to keep the light manufacturing in this area. And it does, it's, it's something where it's going to stay a, a very prominent part of the street experience. So, you know, that .8 FAR yields about 13,500 square feet. It's been, it's been configured so as to best work with, with the current traffic patterns. We have a loading dock coming off of, of, of Banker Street here. So Banker is the main truck, truck traffic corridor going to, going to Acme further down, down the block. So we think this is going to be a very fine, fine-grained addition. Thank you.
Mr. Libares.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission for this team? I see Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. Richard, can you speak to us about the industrial use and how much of the industrial use will be retail advanced clarity to it?
Sure. So Commissioner Dweck, I know first that there's a consistent discussion and continuous discussion with the Brooklyn Borough President's Office regarding, you know, the retail accessory component to industrial uses. So the short of it is that on this application, of course, we're somewhat hamstrung because we don't have a building yet. We've gone through a very lengthy process. But here, the applicant in discussions as recent as yesterday has spoken to some manufacturing businesses within, existing within the Greenpoint-Williamsburg area, who would be able to take space at the site once developed. So I, without going into the particularities of what type of use that would be, we would note that the accessory retail use, as would be intended, the bottom line is that they would have to be consistent with Department of Buildings requirements regarding what percentage would be able to be used for accessory. But I think here importantly, Commissioner Dweck, and I would actually defer to Nick for, due to his familiarity with, with this project and the area. You know, I think the idea would be that the, the ground floor use here, being an industrial use, is somewhat, as Nick had mentioned, unprecedented in the area. We've had conversations not merely with the community board, which was unanimous in their approval, as well as other stakeholders, but also with Evergreen, who has issued a letter of support of the application, basically specifically because of this ground floor industrial use. So we are sensitive to the fact that there are always concerns about it looking more like retail than industrial. But here, I think the fact that we're going to be able to have an industrial user on the ground floor space, we foresee them being able to, you know, be observed by people in the area. This is going to be an exciting way to demonstrate the industrial, current industrial and past historical uses in the area. It's just a, you know, a really exciting building to see being built. And Nick, I don't know if you want to add anything about, about this.
Sure. I, I mean, we would, we would contemplate that it would be very, very typical of, of, of what you see now. So for example, if you're going towards, towards like Greenpoint, like 67 West Street, the Greenpoint Manufacturing Center, they have, they have a lot of light, light manufacturing that hasn't been in, in, inborn, like retail component to it. You know, so for example, like clothing manufacturer, jewelry manufacturer, these are people that are in the spaces that will be making this stuff, but are also vending it out of there. So like we said, we have to comply with, with like the O B scriptures with, with regard, you know, to making sure that we told the line of accessory uses and keeping the dominant use, you know, kosher in that, in that way. But this is, this is really something which is, which is typical of this area. And we've been seeing it evolve for the past almost like 20 years at this point. You know, we've been in this area and, you know, we're very much excited because we, we think this is something which, you know, will be, will be counter the rest of the development trend in this area, which is, which is actively replacing a lot of this stuff with, with just straight up retail.
Nick, do you have any idea as to how many employees will be located in the industrial space?
You know what? It depends. It depends on what kind of use, use that there is. Because for example, if it's, if it's like a beer, beer-like brewing use, or it's, if it's something which, which, which has a lot more automation or like larger equipment, there'll be, there'll be fewer people. But if it ends up being, the way that it's been set up, it's extremely flexibly set up so that you could have maybe five or six different, like different users on this, on this floor. So if it's, if it's like a smaller, you know, if it's more, more chopped up, you would see, I think, some more, some more people in there just because each of those.
Thank you.
Businesses. Sure.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Levin?
Yeah, just actually following up on the industrial use. Thanks for the information you provided so far. You're asking for a waiver of loading docks, taking it down to just one loading dock for the entire building.
Yes.
Um, and how is that going to work? You indicate in the, I think it's in the EIS, that commercial deliveries are, that the deliveries to the industrial space will be more like commercial deliveries and those will likely happen curbside. So that kind of raises a question about street congestion. And I'm also wondering how the one loading dock is going to work for the entire building. And I also realize it's a really constrained site. So, you know, I, I can kind of see why you're trying to make this work. But is it really going to work? Is, or is it so constrained that we're inviting a lot of congestion on the surrounding streets?
So, so we think it's going to work because of where we have, where we've placed it. So it's on the right, the right side of site because this is, this is the site that has a lot of the truck traffic. So, and it's also a, a slightly wider, wider street. And it's also mid, mid like block. So if this gets chopped up, then it's, then it's very centrally located. So we can have a single loading berth which serves like all of those spaces, which would array around it. And if it's a single user, you know, that's, that's also great too. So something that we might be contemplating in the future, depending on what the tenant is, you know, we might be coming in with, with some sort of freight elevator, you know, that would be serviced in the cellar. If it's somebody who'd be coming in to take also the cellar space as well. So, you know, we, we think that it's actually well, well-sized. It's something which is characteristic of other projects that have been done in this area for this, for this amount of, of space. And I, I, I think it's a concern for sure, but I think we've, we've done the best that we could do with the site. And after, after like looking at it, I, I think it actually works, works pretty well.
Okay, thank you. And can I ask you also about bicycle parking? You note that you're putting in 15 spaces, but that strikes me as a drop in the bucket for the number of people who may be visiting this building.
Yeah, yeah. So this is something where we, we just show, we just show what the minimum is, but this is, this is always demand-driven. So in these, in these like office buildings that you see in this area, you know, there's always, there's almost always one, one like room every single floor, or you'll have some, some sort of massive crowd that's in the cellar. So we didn't show it because we didn't have to show it, but you can, you can be assured that in this, in this area, there'll be ample bike, bike park.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the commission? If not, I would just ask.
I have a better question. Yes.
Sorry. Vice, okay, sorry. Vice Chair Knuckles, you first. Let Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just looking at texts here again, but I'm having some technological issues. What is the minimum percentage of industrial that, that must be contained in a building within the IBIA?
With this special permit, it's .8 FAR. So on this site, it's about 13,460 feet.
And you have how much?
We have, we have exactly that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes, Commissioner Levin mentioned something that, that got me thinking. In, in the past, you know, this question of bicycle parking has come up and developers have made commitments to increase the number of spots. I recall, you know, a project in, in Brooklyn along Atlantic, where that was, that became part of the report. So it would be great for there to be, you know, more clarity around that. And, and for the department, I think from a policy perspective, I think we're recognizing that, you know, the current requirements are, you know, do not reflect the kind of demand for parking, bicycle parking that we now see and that obviously we want to encourage as we build more networks of, you know, bicycle lanes throughout the city. So, you know, I, it would be great to begin collecting information about, and you mentioned, Nick, this is demand-driven. So, you know, if we understood, if you were open to sharing, you know, your experience around the kind of demand that you have seen and needed to respond to in, in this case or in others, you know, perhaps that could be the beginning of some thinking on the department's side about, you know, whether it's time to revisit those requirements.
So what, what would you suggest? I mean, we could, we'd be happy to, to help out. If we could take, one, one thing that I was thinking is that we could, we could do like photo tours of these different buildings to show you, you know, what, what these different offices do because.
I mean, I would be interested in ratios, you know, that's, you know, what ratios do you see are, are, are in demand that you often offer above and beyond the requirement? You know, I think it's as, as simple as that. I mean, you referenced this. I wasn't sure if you were talking from, about, from experience or just from anecdotal knowledge of other projects. It was unclear, but, you know, that's, that's information, I think, would be useful for us as a commission.
Okay, sure. I mean, yeah, let me speak with, with Rich. I mean, look, I mean, you could, we could, we could send you, we have, we have intimate personal knowledge of, let's say, six or seven office buildings in this area where it would be fairly easy just to gather up how many bicycle spaces they have on, let's say, a certain amount of like floor area, on every floor. Would that be a good, good start?
That would be, that would be phenomenal. I mean, I'm, I'm speaking, you know, as one commissioner, obviously this is not the department making the request. We can connect internally on that. But, you know, I do think it's, it's worth receiving the information and, and having it at the very least.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, we could, we could do that. We will get, get something to you by the end of the week.
I think we could work also with the, with the Brooklyn office of, of the department, given the fact that the IBIA currently is here and, and I know is something that's growing in terms of being established in Queens. So we, we'd be happy to share that information with them. It may be easier administratively for us to, to talk to them about that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that you do that, Mr. Lobel. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this matter? Well, seeing that there isn't anyone, I will say that this hearing is closed. Thank you.
Next item, commissioners, Borough of Queens, calendar numbers 24 and 25. CD1, calendar number 24, C210200ZMQ. Calendar number 25, N210201ZRQ. A public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 31st Street and Hoyt Avenue rezoning.
Madam Chair, Mercuson this matter?
Okay, okay. It looks like we will have a team presentation, 10 minutes. Frank St. Jacques from Ackerman will, will commence. Thank you.
Good, good morning, Chair Lamont and Commissioners. My name is Frank St. Jacques with Ackerman LLP. I'm joined by the project architect, Nellie Hennessy of Colliando Architects, and Silas Levitt of HANEC. Our environmental consultant, Christina Shipensky of Philip Habib and Associates will be available for questions. Next slide, please. The proposed zoning map and text amendments will promote transit-oriented and mixed-use development in Astoria at three underutilized sites on the 31st Street corridor, on wide streets with excellent access to mass transit and open space. The project vision is to revitalize this section of 31st Street near the recently renovated Astoria Boulevard Station with significant community benefits, including new housing with permanently income-restricted units under MIH Option 1, a partnership with HANEC for senior and youth programming, a daycare and local retail, along with about 193 associated jobs. We note that there are fewer total units shown as presented at certification because we added two- and three-bedroom family units based on community board feedback. The project architect will discuss additional post-certification design changes in a moment. Next slide, please. The three development sites and surrounding contexts are shown on this aerial view. The rezoning area is highly transit-oriented with access to the Astoria Boulevard Station and several bus lines, and the Dipmars Boulevard Station is a few blocks to the north. The elevated railway above 31st Street dominates the streetscape, and there's currently very little active ground floor use on this portion of 31st Street, despite being right next to the Astoria Boulevard Station and Hoyt Playground. Development Site 1 is currently a one-story restaurant building with a surface parking lot. Development Site 2 is currently a large retail store with blank street walls and a surface parking lot. And Development Site 3 was formerly industrial buildings. In the interest of time, I'll move through the next several sites quickly as the commission has been briefed on the project specifics. Next slide, please. Starting with the southernmost site, Development Site 1, you can see in these photos the elevated rail above 31st Street. Next slide, please. Here are the details of the proposed 11-story building with 51 units, as well as commercial, about 10,000 square feet of commercial floor area and about 3,000 square feet of community facility floor area that would be used as a daycare center. Next slide, please. Moving north to Development Site 2, you can see that long blank street wall for the existing retail use at the site and its fenced surface parking. Next slide, please. And here are the project details for this site. It is the largest of the three sites and would be developed with a 12-story building with 161 units and space for HANEC to provide senior programming, as well as about 14,000 square feet of ground floor commercial floor area for local retail. Next slide, please. Finally, the northernmost site, Development Site 3, is just north of 24th Avenue. Next slide. An 11-story building with 63 units is proposed for this site. It would have space for HANEC to provide youth programming, as well as local retail on the ground floor, about 7,000 square feet. Next slide, please. The bulk regulations of the currently mapped C43 zoning district are an important factor in the rationale for this rezoning. The 2010 Astoria rezoning did not make the voluntary inclusionary housing program available in this area. We believe this rezoning is an opportunity to refine the zoning to allow more housing at nearly the same envelope that is allowed today. This slide provides a comparison between the maximum FARs and height permitted in the current and proposed zoning districts. As you can see, the zone, the rezoning represents an increase of 1.2 FAR from the C43 to the C45X, and an increase of 1.7 FAR from the C43 to the C44. The proposed zoning districts would allow more housing production versus community facility use and would also require the provision of permanently income-restricted units under MIH within a similar envelope to the current C43. The rezoning would promote a revitalization of this transit-oriented area. Next slide. And this slide shows the combined breakdown of all three projects. Of the 69 permanently income-restricted units under MIH Option 1, 24 units would be provided at 40% AMI, 25 at 60% AMI, and 20 at 80% AMI. And you can see the corresponding rents and income limits in each income band. This is consistent with the local AMI. in each income band. This is consistent with the local AMIs for the area. Project architect Nellie Hennessy will now discuss the design changes since certification. Next slide, please.
Good morning. I'm Nellie Hennessy from Caliendo Architects. This rendering showed that design changes incorporated into Development Site 2 after the project was certified in June. The most significant change is that we lowered the building from 14 stories to 12 stories. Additionally, we incorporated articulation to minimize the appearance of bulk and create visual interest along 31st Street, which is a Y street with an elevator subway track. Next slide, please. These renderings of the streetscape for Development Site 2 show the facade articulation and show that the ground floor will be activated by new local retail. We believe that this is a dramatic improvement from the blank street wall and fenced surface parking currently at the site. Next slide, please. For Development Site 3, we relocated the second-floor screen parking to the cellar and now have two levels of community facility use on the second and third floors. We also refined the facade design with different materials and articulation. Mr. Silas Levitt will now discuss HANEC's role in the project. Next slide, please.
Good morning. My name is Silas Levitt, and I'm the Housing Development Coordinator for HANEC. HANEC is an affordable housing and social services nonprofit that was founded in 1972 in Astoria. Currently, we serve over 30,000 community members from youth to older adults. We also own 650 units of affordable housing in Queens and are the property management agent of affordable units located in four different buildings throughout the borough. We are fully committed to the development of affordable housing within New York City and especially in Astoria, and we support any efforts towards that goal. For this project, we've been engaged in a dual capacity, both as the mandatory inclusionary housing agent and then also as a social services provider. As an MIH agent, HANEC will be responsible for ensuring that the 69 MIH units are rented and maintained in compliance with zoning provisions and applicable guidelines. This includes the advertisement and marketing of the affordable units, management of the housing connect lottery process, selection of the tenants and managing the initial lease-up of the affordable units, and then on an ongoing basis, managing the waitlist and providing long-term quality assurance and compliance for the affordable units. We are also proposing to extend a mix of senior services, workforce development, youth and after-school programming, and LGBTQ+ counseling to the project site. The proposed programs include the HANEC Information and Referral Program, which currently serves seniors in the Bronx, the HANEC Workforce Development Program, including the Jobs to Build On Program, which currently serves adults 18 and older in Harlem, and the HANEC After-School Programs, which through the Department of Youth and Child Development serve children throughout Astoria. Lastly, HANEC hopes to provide a counseling service for LGBTQ+ Astoria residents, as well as one for older adults who are members of the Astoria and Queens communities. These counseling services could also dovetail with our legal and immigration services already existing in the Astoria area. As these programs are dependent on funding from the city and/or state, the final suite of services may be slightly different. However, we feel the programs listed represent a good mix based on the needs of the Astoria community. Thank you all so much for your consideration. I'm going to pass the talking back to Frank from Ackerman.
Great, thanks, Silas. Next slide, please. And that actually concludes our presentation. As I noted, myself and members of the project team, including our environmental consultant, are all available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commission for this team? Well, I don't see any questions. We will follow our typical procedure of five speakers in opposition, followed by five speakers in support, going back and forth until the speaker list is exhausted. Our first speaker will be Laura Picaio in opposition. Ms. Picaio.
Hi, thank you. Good morning to the City Planning Commission, and thank you for having me here today. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The proposed rezoning for the development on 31st Street and Hoyt Avenue is yet another affront to everything that is beneficial for Astoria. As someone who lives directly behind the proposed rezoning, I am disgusted. We have the Astoria that we are all familiar with, with human-scale buildings and a community of neighbors, and then we have the Astoria full of 10 and 12-story glass towers blocking out light to their small neighbors below, with people moving in and out and developers placing profits before the integrity of the neighborhood while living tax-free. This project is built to reinvigorate the area, but if you're from this exact area, you will notice, in fact, quite active. I walk down 31st Street in Hoyt daily, and it is far from desolate. What do we like about Astoria and how are we working to preserve this? Is it large developments and anonymity? Is the developer here to make Astoria, to make sure Astoria retains the people-focused, human-scale, green streets and quality of life it always had? Or are these rezonings proposed to pack more and more people into our chains, pack and overflow our sewer system, pack at our schools, and overwhelm our already-stressed energy grid, and overburden our existing infrastructure? We can't keep pretending these sham affordable housing developments are either affordable or beneficial for Astoria. How can we continue to pack out the neighborhood without any changes to infrastructure, knowing full well that the environment cannot handle it, almost criminal? Please honestly ask yourself, what value does this project add to the people of Astoria? What real value does this rezoning bring to the neighborhood? Or does this specific rezoning only value the developer? Does its scale even match what is around it? Can we add to the community while not destroying the character of the community? Can we deliver much-needed services while still respecting the integrity of the area? Yes, we can. We can easily have HANEC daycare centers and shops without this rezone. This is not a this or that. It can be both, and we should demand both because we need both. Please ask yourself again, who benefits directly from this rezoning, especially when the current zoning already allows for large developments? As someone who would be directly affected by these zoning law changes, who lives on 32nd Street and who does not own a home here, I ask you to please vote for the people of Astoria and against the zoning change. We can develop without creating tax-abided megastructures in residential areas. We cannot continue to dump 8, 10, 12-story buildings into 2- and 3-story residential areas. If you do not listen to the residents of Astoria who will be directly impacted, then who will listen to us? This rezoning and subsequent development will have a negative impact on hundreds of homes for years to come for the community. The residents have overwhelmingly come out against this rezoning, including signing a petition garnering hundreds of signatures from locals. The developer also created a petition, rather than 400 signatures, only a small handful even lived in Astoria, let alone the state. This is the future of Astoria, and as a resident, I'm asking you to please not allow this rezoning as it will only harm us. The community board unanimously voted against this rezoning 25 to 4 just weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission for Ms. Picaio? Okay, seeing that, thank you again. The next speaker will be Joe Morielli.
My name is Joe Morielli, and I am here as a constituent to recommend against adopting URB items number 210200ZMQ and N210201ZRQ. I am a 10-year resident of Community Board 1, first as a renter and now alongside my wife as a homeowner. While my written comments provided yesterday go into much more detail, here are some key takeaways I urge you to consider before voting. Even if this action does not pass, the applicants are free to develop mixed-use commercial and residential properties without rezoning. They are also welcome to offer MIH units without rezoning. Having additional housing stock and MIH units in a neighborhood is a laudable goal. Rezoning is not a prerequisite for this outcome. The EAS and the applicant's presentation are free of any identified need for this change, and I subsequently propose that the applicants have failed to meet this basic threshold for approval, even after submitting a revised EAS this summer. As the EAS plainly lays out and my comments explore in detail, approving this request will raise throughput at the Astoria Boulevard subway station beyond its design criteria. This will result in a condition where the platform is unable to discourage passengers disembarking during peak times, potentially resulting in unsafe conditions for our neighbors. The EAS downplays this by saying that the impact does not rise to the level of, quote, "significantly adversely impacted," end quote, but this is akin to saying the house is okay because only the kitchen is on fire. The incremental traffic this proposal states it will bring in the EAS will come at the cost of roads more hostile to pedestrians and bikers alike. It will add dozens of vehicles to the nightly queue of drivers searching for on-street parking even as we keep supply constant. More cruising means more emissions and greater potential for accidents. The situation for our public schools is similar to that of the subways, except the schools are already beyond capacity, even in the case of no action. If you are interested in rezoning along 31st Street, should it not be part of a concerted effort that draws the city and state partners into the conversation? Should we not lever these partners first to acquire educational and transit resources that can scale with the growth of the neighborhood? Why do these properties need to be rezoned when the applicants are already able to accomplish their goals of mixed-use development under the current zoning text? At its core, this is a question of consent. The applicants are asking for your consent to much more than a simple rezoning. They want your consent to build out of character with a zoning DCP laid down with extensive community input in 2010. They want your consent to busy our streets with new cars looking for parking. They want your consent to create unsafe conditions at the Astoria Boulevard train station. They want your consent to overcrowd local schools. They don't need it. I encourage you to vote against this proposal and share these and any other concerns you have with the city council. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Morielli. Are there any questions from the commission? Okay, I don't see any, so thank you very much. The next speaker will be Renzo Ramirez.
Good morning, Chair Lamont and members of the commission. My name is Renzo Ramirez, and I am a member of 32BJ SDIU. On behalf, yeah, I'm a member of 32BJ SDIU here on behalf of more than 85,000 32BJ members to express our strong support for this project. The developers, MDM Development Group, have applied to building three new 11- and 14-story mixed-use buildings that will include residential, commercial, and community space. We are pleased to announce that the developer has reached out early to make a credible commitment to provide prevailing wage jobs to the future building service workers at this site. We estimate that this rezoning will allow for the creation of new property service jobs and 72 new affordable units. These jobs are typically filled by local members of the community, and because of this commitment, will pay family-sustaining wages, which help bring working families into the middle class. These apartments are needed for working people in Queens. This commitment, this commitment is too good. Prevailing wage jobs will give opportunity for upward mobility, security, and dignity to working-class families. 32BJ supports responsible developers who invest in the communities where they build. We know that this development will continue to uphold the industry standard and provide opportunities for working families to thrive. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Ramirez? So, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. The next speaker will be Alia Ganapowski.
Hello, my name is Alia Ganapowski, and I was just told about this meeting five minutes ago, so I apologize in advance if I repeat something that somebody else has said. I'm calling in because I live about a block away from the proposed rezoning, and I am extremely concerned about more luxury apartments coming in when that is not what our community needs. I appreciate that they're talking about bringing in affordable housing, but it's not actually affordable for real people. And they're gonna, they're going to make it affordable to them by adding so many more luxury apartments when we can't handle, our infrastructure can't handle that, and that's not what our community needs. We need affordable housing. And, I mean, which is the opposite of luxury. I'm very, very concerned that, honestly, I didn't know about this meeting until five minutes ago, when I am a stakeholder. And when this area was rezoned back in 2010, it was done during a meeting that was not announced to the public. It got rescheduled, and that rescheduled meeting didn't get shared. This area is not, should not be zoned for anything over six stories. Our infrastructure can't handle it. Our geography can't handle it. During the last storm, we had major flooding. Water came through my walls into my basement. This building is going to have, mean that there is, you know, more water runoff into our basements, and there is just nothing good about it for those who live here or those who want to live here. We want affordable housing, but we want truly affordable housing. We want affordable rents, not luxury. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ganapowski. Are there any questions from the commission for Ms. Ganapowski? Okay, thank you very much. The next speaker will be Claudia Koger.
My name is Claudia Koger, and I've been a resident of Astoria Houses for over 60 years and the president of Astoria Houses President Association. I'm a talus advocate for social welfare, education, and tennis rights in Astoria community. As an advocate for my community, I speak today. I'm sorry, my voice. As an advocate for my community, I speak for the welfare, education, and tennis rights in Astoria community as an advocate for my community. I speak today to support of the 31st Street rezoning as it will provide residents with new facilities and resources, including a youth and senior center. The youth center will provide much-needed space for recreation and will be open to the community at large. The youth center will promote social interaction, volunteerism, and civil pride, while providing opportunities for young residents to be active and to interact with other residents. The developer has already demonstrated their support for Astoria Houses and supported this year's Family Day. Their proposal to work with HANEC to create programming at best serves Astoria's needs is more than promising. This development will turn unutilized land into a community resource that will be immediately accessible to the people. It will house and help, house in the seniors and children it will serve. Please accept this testimony as my support for the rezoning. Thank you for your time and consideration of this important request.
Thank you very much, Ms. Koger. Are there any questions from the commission for Ms. Koger? Not? Thank you so much, Ms. Koger. The next speaker will be Nikia George.
My name is Nikia George, and I am a community advocate for Woodside Houses in Queens. I'm speaking to show my support for the proposed zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment to facilitate new mixed-use development on 31st Street in Community District 1, Queens. The proposed development would include over 375 dwelling units, of which 100 will be permanently affordable units. For the 100 new affordable housing units, it will be significantly less than the market rates for comparable units throughout the neighborhood. Additionally, this change would allow for several new commercial locations to be opened, which will provide new job opportunities for those in the community. This zoning change would beautify this section of the 31st Street corridor that has been underdeveloped and somewhat neglected over the years. This portion on 31st Street, as opposed to other portions of 31st Street, is much less active and death faceless. The current dark and dangerous street will be reactivated into a place of life and resilience. I support the proposed rezoning and ask for your support as well, and I thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. George. Are there any questions for Ms. George? All right, thank you again. The next speaker will be Corinne Hanes.
My name is Corinne Hanes, and I am a lifelong resident of Long Island City. In the last 18 months, we've really seen how badly new housing stock is needed. There are upwards of 50,000 homeless people in New York City, including children. Every time we put an affordable unit online, it gives someone a greater opportunity to get a home. I'm speaking today to show my support for the 31st Street rezoning as it will provide affordable housing options, a new senior and youth center, along with high-quality jobs and community programming. One of the reasons I am most passionate about this project is because of the new youth center. High-quality youth programs promote positive youth development and offer a safe place where youth can explore and reach their potentials. This project is partnering with HANNOC and Urban Upbound to create programming that best serves Astoria's needs. HANNOC's service to the neighborhood spans almost fifty years and since their founding in nineteen seventy-two, they have been providing services including youth programming, adult literacy classes, legal clinics, healthcare access programs, employment and training resources, and family counseling, along with several senior centers that they run. I ask that you please accept this testimony as my support for the rezoning and I'd like to thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Haynes. Are there any questions from the commission for Ms. Haynes? All right, thank you very, very much. I, I'd like to note now that we're getting near the end of the public hearing on this matter. If you haven't registered to speak, but you've decided during the course of the hearing that you'd like to do so, now is the time to register. Again, you can find instructions on how to register, whether online or via telephone, at www.nyc.gov/nycengage. The next speaker will be Crowan Mason.
Yes, good morning. I'm Pastor Crowan Mason, Senior.
Good morning.
Astoria. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, I'm the senior pastor of the Community Church of Astoria and I thank you for allowing me to speak. As an advocate for my community, I'm always looking forward for projects that will bring truly affordable options to our residents. New affordable housing in Western Queens is not a desire, but rather a need. Many Nitro residents are living in substandard conditions where they are constantly overlooked and grossly undeserved. Affordable housing is incredibly limited, leaving many residents with no way out of Nitro's, of the Nitro cycle. I'm here today to express my support for the Thirty First Street and Hoyt Avenue rezoning. This development will bring much-needed housing and jobs. It will also light up a blighted block that needs some serious TLC. The developers have partnered with HANNOC, which will act as an affordable housing administrator. HANNOC's services to the neighborhood spans almost fifty years and since their founding in nineteen seventy-two, they've been providing a wide array of services to the community. This project is a glimpse of hope for thousands of Astoria residents seeking new affordable housing. I strongly believe that this project is a step in the right direction, working with reliable non-for-profit partners like Urban Upbound to ensure local hiring and job training. Please accept this testimony as my support for the rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Pastor Mason. Are there any questions? All right, the, the last speaker I see signed up is Annie Cotton Morris.
Annie Cotton Morris does not appear to be in the room. She was here earlier and maybe having tech issues.
Well, then, I guess, is there anyone else present in the, uh, hearing who would like to speak on, on this item? If not, I will say that this hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
Earl of Queens, calendar numbers twenty-six and twenty-seven, our last hearing item for this morning, commissioners. CD four, calendar number twenty-six, C two-one-zero-zero-four-one ZMQ. Calendar number twenty-seven, N two-one-zero-zero-four-two ZRQ. A public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning forty-five dash twenty, Eighty-Third Street rezoning.
Thank you very much. Uh, it looks like we will have a team presentation on this item. Um, I, I do not see the list of speakers for this item, unfortunately, but you can please commence.
Sure, thank you, Chair Lamont. Uh, once again, Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, P.C., for the applicant. Good morning again. Uh, I'm joined by, uh, SBJ Group, specifically Kenneth Murawski and Isaac Daniel Strachan, as well as Amber Cartalian from Equity Environmental, to present to you the forty-five twenty, Eighty-Third Street rezoning and text amendments. Next slide. Um, the location of the property is forty-five twenty, Eighty-Third Street. Uh, it is in Queens Community District Four. The actions requested are first, a zoning map amendment to rezon the area from an M-one-one to an R-seven-A zoning district. And the second, of course, being a zoning text amendment of appendix F to provide for both option one and options two in the rezoned area. This rezoning and actions would permit the development of a nine-story-plus seller, one hundred and forty-one thousand square foot residential building with approximately a hundred and sixty-three units and the creation of forty-one to forty-nine affordable units or inclusionary units, depending on the level of affordability. The proposed action would also permit a youth group three school as a right uh, that is currently under construction pursuant to a BSA seventy-three-nineteen special permit. Next slide. So, and the next slide shows the tax map. Uh, what I feel this shows best is the context of the surrounding area. Although we are currently zoned M-one-one, the commissioners can see that we are surrounded by medium-density residential districts, uh, including non-contextual R-six to the south, contextual R-six B and R-seven B to the west and east, and importantly, R-seven A to the north. Uh, most importantly, in, in or around two thousand and six, the remainder of the broad block to the north was zoned R-seven A, C-two-three. So we have an immediate context here of not just R-six B zoning to the west, but also R-seven A on our own block. Uh, this will allow us to rezon to within the surrounding context of mixed-use and residential buildings, inclusive of the density of those buildings, such as the, uh, the eight-story residential building to the north. Next slide. So the land use map demonstrates, uh, the current and proposed land use in the area. Uh, again, this existing site is an underutilized site with warehouse buildings and vacant, and a vacant lot. Uh, this will be redeveloped with our nine-story, uh, residential building. Uh, importantly, there's a portion of the site right now, and the architects will be able to discuss this shortly, which includes a sixty-three thousand square foot, um, charter school. Uh, again, this was done, uh, within the last, approved within the last year to a year and a half at the BSA. Um, so this is, um, you know, this will allow for the charter school now to become conforming within the R-seven-A district. Next slide. The zoning map merely demonstrates the, uh, site before and after. We note that, um, with the inclusion of this site as an R-seven-A site, uh, the entirety of the block now will be zoned either R-seven-A with commercial or straight R-seven-A. Um, and with that, I would turn to the next slide, which demonstrates, um, a picture of the site, uh, inclusive of the charter school on the site. And so I would now turn it over to, uh, Kenneth and Isaac Daniel to discuss the architecture.
Thank you, Rich. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Kenneth Murawski from Stephen B. Jacobs Group on behalf of, um, the applicant. And, um, right here, you see on the screen, uh, current construction progress of the charter school that was approved under a BSA special permit, uh, which is, uh, scheduled to open sometime next year. Next slide. Thank you. Um, this is a, uh, exonographic, um, image of just the massings of the proposed development next to the charter school in blue. And gray behind us is, uh, representative of some, uh, adjacent developments next to our site. We're proposing a one hundred and forty-one thousand square foot residential development, nine stories, with a below-grade cellar for parking and building services. We're proposing one hundred and sixty-three dwelling units and, um, under MIH options one or two, either forty-one affordable units or forty-nine affordable units. Uh, next page. Thank you. Uh, just a zoning plan showing our relation to the site. The frontage of our proposed development would be on the corner of Forty-seventh Avenue and Eighty-second Street. The charter school faces Eighty-Third Street. We would have a required, um, distance between buildings, um, above the abutment, which you'll see in the next slide. Go to the next slide. Thank you. Uh, this shows the relationship between our proposed development and the charter school. Nine stories, charter school's, uh, four stories with a roof terrace. And then, next slide. This, these are just some illustrative renderings of the proposed development. This is on the corner of Forty-seventh and Eighty-second Street. Uh, we're looking to propose, uh, metal paneling with setback terraces since we're at a transit, um, transition area with the R-six district to the, to the east of us. Next slide. And should just be another view looking down Eighty-second Street of our proposed building with our parking facility entrance and lobby. And then the next slide will, uh, just break down the MIH, um, affordability matrix, which, if there are any questions from the commissioners, Rich can, or Rich or ownership could answer. And then the last slide, I'll, I'll touch on it and then I'll hand it over to Amber is, um, just, uh, some que, questions came up during, uh, community review of infrastructure. Um, some stormwater management, um, methods that we're going to, uh, propose in the development is that all of our stormwater on the site has to be managed. Um, so if like rain hits the side of our building, we have to be able to manage that. Uh, detention tank will control the stormwater flow into the, um, public system, uh, the sewer. And then sustainable roofing zones, we'll, we'll be proposing a mixture of green roof system and photovoltaics where it works for the site. So the lower courtyard that we have will probably be the green roof. Uh, and then, of course, low-flow plumbing fixtures in our dwelling units. Um, and then a question came up about sewer capacity. Will be required to perform, uh, or the engineer of record will perform a hydraulic capacity analysis, which will evaluate, uh, the existing system and our addition to it. And if there is a need for additional capacity, uh, we will work with DEP on, uh, providing those upgrades to the system. So I'm going to pass it over to Amber, who will touch on some of the environmental, um, requirements of the site.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, this is Amber Cartalian with Equity Environmental Engineering. I performed the environmental assessment for both the, uh, special permit related to the school building, as well as the rezoning, where we, um, evaluated the cumulative impacts of both the residential and the school. Um, although the school was under construction at the time of, uh, the rezoning environmental assessment. Uh, just to follow on Ken's previous slide, uh, during community board, there was questions related to, um, environmental assessment as it relates to stormwater and sewer. Uh, just to summarize this slide, uh, stormwater and sewer infrastructure was not analyzed as part of the environmental assessment, although, as Ken mentioned, it is being considered because it was below the development threshold warranty analysis. That's just a summary of that side. Let me go to the next one. Uh, we performed very detailed traffic, uh, analysis for this application, both, um, under the special permit application, as well as the rezoning, which considered both the residential and the school. Um, there's multiple traffic, um, school safety improvements that are currently underway and have been reviewed and approved by, uh, DOT, including a construction of a new sidewalk along the south side of Whitney. Um, enhanced high-visibility crosswalks at Eighty-Third Street in Whitney, um, as well as, uh, several, uh, changes to curbside parking regulations. This includes no standing any-time zones, um, and school pickup and drop-off zones, which will be shown in the, the next slide. Uh, so this is just a summary of the improvements in place. As you can see on the south side, there's a new sidewalk along Whitney Avenue, including improvements to the four corners of Whitney and Broadway with all new ADA compliant ped ramps, um, as well as the intersection of Forty-Fifth and Eighty-Third Street. Those would be improved with new ADA compliant ramps as well. Um, a new crosswalk along Eighty-Third Street in Whitney, you can see, and, uh, the changes to school no stand, uh, changes to parking regulations, including no standing any-time along the north side of Whitney and, uh, school no standing along Whitney Avenue, as well as, uh, Eighty-Third Street. And go to the next slide. These are just as zoomed-in views of those intersection improvements and I'm happy to answer any other questions as it relates to the environmental assessment.
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commission? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. So, we will now follow our procedure of five speakers in opposition, followed by five speakers in, in support, going back and forth until the speaker list is exhausted. Uh, the first speaker will be Doreen Mohammed.
Hi, my name is Doreen Mohammed. I'm on, uh, Community Board One. Um, I live in Astoria, um, and, um, I'm also on the Housing Committee. So we've like kind of seen that this proposal and like, we overwhelmingly had voted against it because it really is not sufficient affordable housing, like the MIH that's the ones they're using. It is really not sufficient, especially for all the rising rents that's occurring. So unless the housing is a lot more affordable units and like deeply affordable, not do you sort of affordable that we're seeing, um, I do not support this plan. And also I say this as a renter, you know, like, I've born and raised in Queens. Um, always feel like I'm on the verge of being priced out. Um, I can only afford to live in Astoria right now because of pandemic rent pricing. I know so many of my neighbors are going through the same thing. So if we're going to do any type of rezonings for developments, they need to be truly affordable, like on a public housing kind of level, otherwise it's really not the best investment of our resources and funds. And this was something that was opposed by both renters and homeowners on the community board.
Okay, thank you. We'll take questions from the commission now. Um, Commissioner Levin.
Um, yes, Ms. Mohammed, I just wanted to ask, you mentioned that you're a member of Community Board One and referred to living in Astoria. Are you speaking about the Eighty-Third Street rezoning, which is in CD four? Or maybe you're talking about the Thirty First Street rezoning, we just.
Um, I'm talking about the Thirty First Street rezoning. Like, I couldn't join this call till then, so I wasn't sure how the testimony works.
Okay, well, your, 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 your testimony is well-received. We, we now understand and, and truthfully, what you have to say about the Thirty First Street rezoning could probably apply to many other MIH projects around the city too. So thank you for making an eloquent statement.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the, the, the next speaker will be Kevin Williams.
Hi, uh, this is Kevin Williams. I'm actually, uh, consultant for the applicant team and I'm just available if there are any questions. So, um, I will just let the, the hearing commence.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Williams. Then, uh, the next speaker will be Stacy Gauthier.
Good morning, Chair Lamont. Good morning, commissioners. Um, my name is Stacy Gauthier and I'm the Executive Director of the Renaissance Charter School in Jackson Heights and the Renaissance Charter School Two, which is the charter school that will be opening on the site that was referenced in the presentation. And I'm here to, um, offer my support for this proposed residential housing. Um, this area has long been neglected. Um, as you know, it was an empty industrial site, um, that's had many, many issues. And I believe that between the school and new residential housing, we will see a, um, a revitalization of the space. I know we're committed from the school property to be great neighbors, um, and offer a community perspective. And we believe that by having families and other people living in the neighborhood, we know there's another building also across the street, that this will make for a better neighborhood and a stronger neighborhood. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gauthier. Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, um, thank you, Stacy. Um, you know, I should note that I'm a former board member of the Renaissance Charter School. Um, it has a long history in Jackson Heights. Um, you know, I'm familiar, uh, with the school as a neighbor. Um, and I, you know, would, I would second, you know, her, her comments, um, in terms of their contribution to the community.
Are there any other questions from the commission for Ms. Gauthier? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Gauthier, for your time and testimony. The next speaker will be John Silviano.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm just here as part of the project team in case anybody had questions. I didn't have anything else to say aside from that, just here if there were any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Silviano. Then, the next speaker appears to be Andrew Esposito.
Andrew Esposito is not in the room.
Okay, then. We're, we're close to the end of this hearing and so, I just want to say that if you haven't registered to speak, but you've decided during the course of the hearing that you'd like to do so, now is the time to register. Again, you can find instructions on how to register, whether online or via phone at www.nyc.gov/nycengage. The last speaker that I have signed up is Scott Barone.
Scott Barone is also not in.
Okay. So, then, is there anybody else here who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will say that this hearing is closed then. Mr. Secretary, is there any other business before the Commission today?
Chair Laramont, there's no other business before the Commission. However, I do have some public information, just to briefly reiterate just what you just mentioned. For those of you who were unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal through DCP's webpage or by mailing your comment to City Planning Commission Calendar Information Office, one-twenty Broadway, Thirty First Floor, New York, New York, one-zero-two-seven-one.
Thank you. So, this remotely held hearing is adjourned. Thank you very much, Commission and members of the public. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, all. Have a great day.
Time is eleven forty-two AM.